Madam Clerk, would you like to call roll?
Councilmember Bridgum.
Here.
Councilmember Dovin.
Present.
Councilmember Klaffenstein.
Here.
Councilmember Nuepe Nyalosa.
Here.
Mayor Protem Tran.
Here.
Mayor Jones.
Here.
And Councilmember O'Neil is absent.
May I ask Assistant City Manager Matt West to do the invocation followed by Councilmember Bridgum to do the Pledge of Allegiance?
All right, please prepare yourself according to your faith. Dear Lord, as we gather tonight, our hearts and thoughts are with those facing the immediate dangers of the multiple fast-moving wildfires that have emerged in our region over the past days. We ask for your shelter and comfort for those directly affected. Bless and bestow strength to the firefighters, emergency responders, and all who are working tirelessly to contain the fires and protect lives and property. Lord may also grant our leaders the clarity and resolve needed to make decisions that ensure the safety, prosperity, and well-being of our community, inspire us all to act with compassion and resilience. We ask this in your name, amen.
Anyone who can face the flag? Please place your hand over your heart, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I think I should pull item three from Consent Calendar first.
Second it.
Actually, I'll pull three and four from Consent Calendar first if we can do this.
Second it.
Call to vote.
Motion received, six yes votes.
Okay, we'll go to presentations. We do have two listed, so item number one.
Tonight, we have a community spotlight in recognition of Mr. Don Schlenker and Susie Clisten for being named the 2024-25 Garden Grove Chamber of Commerce Man and Woman of the Year, and Mr. Assistant City Manager Matt West will provide that report.
This evening, the Garden Grove Council takes great pleasure in recognizing two exceptional community members for their meaningful work in Garden Grove. With the 2024 Garden Grove Chamber of Commerce Man and Woman of the Year, Don Schlenker and Susie Clisten, please come forward. Every year, the Garden Grove Chamber of Commerce selects two dedicated service-oriented individuals who demonstrate community pride through volunteer efforts, and it is the city's privilege to honor these two exceptional individuals. We will begin with the Man of the Year, Don Schlenker. Don, a United States Air Force veteran, operated a construction company in Garden Grove for 43 years. He has been a longtime member of the Kiwanis Club of Garden Grove and has served as Treasurer, President, and Kiwanis Land President. Currently, Don is an active member of the Garden Grove Elks Lodge Number 1952. He has also been involved with various Pacifica High School Booster Clubs, the Garden Grove Boys and Girls Club, and Garden Grove Strawberry Festival Association. Next, we have our Woman of the Year, Susie Clisten. Susie has been a resident of Garden Grove for over 30 years. She and her husband John are proud owners of West County Tire and Automotive, Inc., and have served the community for over 45 years. In 2000, she turned her passion for floral preservation into a business venture and founded Sue's Garden. Susie is an active member of the Garden Grove Chamber of Commerce and the Garden Grove Rittery Club, where she is currently serving on the Women's Division Committee and as President, respectively. She's also involved with Leukemia and Lymphoma Society, excuse me, Meals on Wheels, Northeast Garden Grove Little League, and Ocean Animal Research Response Alliance. At this time, the mayor and city council would like to present a proclamation to Don and Susie for their selection as the 2024 Garden Grove Chamber of Commerce Man and Woman of the Year. Congratulations.
Wow, cool.
All right. Thank you, Steve.
Three, one, two, three, one more. You still got your tongues or something? Thank you.
Congratulations.
Yeah, I'll say something. Thank you. Thank you for this honor. It's really cool to be recognized for just what you do organically in your community and have fun doing. You probably feel the same way.
Absolutely.
And so, yeah, it's just recognition is a big deal, and so, thank you, yeah.
Myself included. I've always done it because I've enjoyed it, and if I thought it was going to lead here, I probably would not have. But thank you.
Thank you, guys, for all you do. Item two.
What's that?
This evening, we have Economic Development Update on Business Resources Available to the Garden Grove Business Community and Assistant City Manager and Economic Development.
Should we do Alzheimer's first?
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me. We go back to item two here for the
Well, you were on the right track, but I think we're, yeah, go for it.
The adoption of proclamation recognizing September 2024 as the Alzheimer's Disease Awareness Month, and Assistant City Manager Matt West will provide that community spotlight. Or, excuse me, proclamation. Mayor, did you? Can we have Kristin Maas come up forward?
All right, World Alzheimer's Awareness Month, September 2024. Whereas, the 2024 theme for raising global awareness to mitigate the stigma of dementia and Alzheimer's disease is "Time to Act on Dementia, Time to Act on Alzheimer's." And whereas, Alzheimer's disease is the most common cause of dementia that tragically robs individuals of their moments and leads to progressive mental and physical impairments. And whereas, more than 164,000 residents in Orange County and over 6 million Americans are currently living with Alzheimer's disease. And whereas, since 1982, the mission of Alzheimer's Orange County is to provide hands-on care and support, information, referrals, education, and resources for families in Orange County and surrounding areas. And whereas, the nation, state, and the city of Garden Grove observe World Alzheimer's Month during the month of September and World Alzheimer's Day on September 21st. Now, therefore, the city council of the city of Garden Grove does hereby proclaim September 2024 as World Alzheimer's Awareness Month in the city of Garden Grove. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Jones, council members, and city of Garden Grove, on behalf of Alzheimer's Orange County and those we serve, thank you very much for the acknowledgement and recognition. We are proud to operate Acacia Healthy Aging Center, which is the longest-running adult day center in Orange County, so thank you very much.
You. All right, and now back to item number two from presentations.
Now, we're ready for the Economic Development Update on the Business Resources Available to the Garden Grove Business Community and Assistant City Manager and Economic Development Director Luna Reynosa is here to provide that.
Good evening, Mayor Jones, members of the city council. Tonight's presentation is a brief overview of some business resources offered by the city to assist our business community. The main emphasis of tonight's presentation is on a new business analytic tool that we are adding to our economic development toolkit called Size Up. With us this evening via Zoom is Mario Obalde, Director of Customer Success with Size Up, a company that provides small business intelligence data. Mario will be available at the end of the presentation to answer any questions. What is economic development? It is the creation of wealth from which community benefits are realized. It's an investment in growing the local economy and enhancing the prosperity and quality of life for all residents. It includes a variety of activities and strategies implemented through an economic development toolkit. Economic development can include programs to create and retain jobs as well as job training programs. An example in our toolkit is our Workforce Activation and Readiness and Boost programs. Economic development can involve attracting and keeping businesses as well as helping existing businesses grow. Example here locally is our Jobs First Program, which is currently being revamped into a revolving loan fund, so more to come on that in the not-too-distant future. Economic development can help to create a more resilient tax base that supports growth. Recent example, and that was before you all, was the Vehicle Rebate Program. Economic development can involve developing or improving community assets that businesses need to succeed. Our new police facility and park are examples there. Economic development can involve allocating resources such as land, labor, and capital. We have quite a few examples of hotel deals where land transactions were involved. And economic development can involve influencing private sector investment to support economic growth. A couple of local examples is the Foods of Garden Grove and Buy in Garden Grove campaign. Small businesses are at the core of our economy. They represent over 99% of all companies. They create 64% of net new private sector jobs, and they contribute more to the local economy than big businesses. Local businesses pay taxes that fund government services, and successful small businesses grow into large businesses that grow the economy and create jobs. Size Up will empower the city to help our small business customers succeed. Mu, please play the video. Do we have audio? Whoops, one too far. We'll have a little bit more information if you didn't catch that all, don't worry. It is common to hear the failure rate of new businesses is high, but the data is insightful because it tells you when businesses tend to fail. 20% of businesses fail in the first year, but an additional 30% fail in years two through five. 30% divided by four years equals an average of 7.5% of businesses failing each of these years. If 7.5% is a predictable or natural rate of business death, then 12.5% of businesses, one out of eight, are failing in the first year due to lack of preparation in one way or another. Being better prepared than the bottom 1/8 of all businesses puts an entrepreneur in a much higher likelihood of success. Bottom line, Size Up helps businesses make smarter decisions using data. Big businesses with the resources to pay for business analytics data have a competitive advantage over small businesses. Let's take a coffee shop example. Corporations like Starbucks or Peet's are able to pay for data that enables them to make informed decisions about where and when to open their next store location. A locally-owned mom-and-pop coffee shop rarely has access to this type of data. As seen on the previous slide, a substantial amount of small businesses fail within the first five years. In today's information economy, businesses without information are at a greater risk of failure. Size Up helps businesses answer questions like the one posed on this slide so they can prepare for success. Size Up is now available for all Garden Grove businesses as well as businesses in the region looking to open another location in Garden Grove. From the city's homepage, ggcity.org, click on Businesses at the top, as shown in the red, and from there, you'll click on Economic Development, and then you'll click on Business Resources, and then you can see four tools under the Business Analytics section. These are all Size Up tools. So, the Small Business Advisor helps entrepreneurs with over 50 topics on starting, managing, and growing a business. Small Business Intelligence helps businesses measure performance, discover potential customers, and optimize target marketing. Shop Local enables the city to promote doing business with local companies. And Pulse enables comparative analysis market research by industry. There are two places to access Small Business Advisor, as shown on the screen. Under Small Business Advisor, businesses can explore topics as they journey through the life of their company. You can see a sampling of some of those topics. There's two ways to access Small Business Intelligence, as shown on the screen. And here, businesses can benchmark performance, discover new customers, optimize advertising, and demographic analysis. The Shop Local tool will be branded as Buy in Garden Grove, and you can access it as shown on the screen. On the tool, I input Electrical Contractors as the type of business I wanted to find in Garden Grove, but you can select any type of industry. The city frequently gets requests for referrals to designers or contractors or other types of businesses, and staff cannot endorse particular businesses, but we now have a tool that we can provide so that inquiring residents and businesses have a digital Yellow Pages at their fingertips that is constantly up-to-date. You can see 10 different electrical contractors have been identified in Garden Grove and where they are located. You can then click on any of these businesses for more information. I selected the first one on the list, and a pop-up window provides the address, phone number, years in business, and type of ownership. I'd like to pause and reintroduce Mario Obalde, our Size Up representative. He is here with us via Zoom. Mario and his team produced a video demonstrating how the tool can be utilized by businesses in Garden Grove. The tool is rather robust, so in the interest of time, only a couple of the many applications are being shown. Mu, please play the video.
Hi, I'm Mario Obalde, Director of Customer Success for Size Up. While we know that any business of any size in any industry can benefit from Size Up, I want to take just a few short minutes to walk you through a use case of a local business that can really benefit from the type of information that Size Up has, because they traditionally would not have access to this type of information, like the big businesses would, the Starbucks, the McDonald's, the Walmarts, the Amazons of the world. So, let's look at an example of a small coffee shop that could really benefit from this information. Now, I've pre-filled in some of this information just because we're short on time, but let's take a look at an example of a coffee shop that's making $2.75 million. We can see that's far above average for a typical coffee shop, but not completely out of bounds. We can see that in the darker areas, there's coffee shops that are making $2.3 to $2.5 million, and that's what Size Up is going to give you, is specific information, not about a generic business, but about your specific business. So, we can look at the concentrations of income, we can look at the overall trends within a given industry, we can look at average salaries in an industry, as well as specific salaries for different types of jobs within an industry. We can look at the number of employees, and this starts to tell us something. While this coffee shop has really high revenue, it's also a big coffee shop. While we can all agree that 20 people is a small business, this coffee shop is actually 25% larger than a typical coffee shop in the city. And we're going to look at information like cost-effectiveness, and this isn't generic, this is about this coffee shop with their higher-than-average wages and their larger-than-average workforce. We can also look at revenue per capita, local retention information, healthcare costs, workers' comp, open hours, all the information that a local business might not usually have that they can now use to optimize their business decision-making. For the purposes of this demonstration, I do want to kind of fast-forward a little bit and to talk about the competition tool, because this competition tool isn't just about showing you where different types of businesses that you're competing with are located, it can also be used for prospecting. I'm going to go ahead and click on the Customers tab. We can add in industries like this. Maybe we're even going to offer our coffee late at night to parents who are exhausted from taking their kids around to the different amusement parks, so we could look at hotels and motels. And what you're going to see is we can actually use this tool to start prospecting across different types of targeted industries. We can also look at supply chain, so we may not even be aware of where roasted coffee is sold, so we can look at different customers or vendors to supply what we need to succeed in our business. We can look at advertising, so we can understand exactly the type of customer that best suits our needs, and we can filter for all sorts of different use cases. And lastly, we can look at demographics, so if we're targeting a specific age group, a certain household size or income level, we can look at all of these criteria to understand where those families are located so that we can target. So, as you can see, we created a tool that can answer all of the questions that a business would need to have answered in order to help those that might die to survive and those that are surviving to thrive. But we have another tool that can actually help businesses that don't understand the question they need to ask to get context, and this is the Small Business Advisor. You can see that we can go through the entire life cycle of a business, like planning your business, and again, we can enter any category here, get information, and then if we need to know more about a topic, we can click on the topic level, get educational information from leading institutions, and then not just get the context around the tool, but then have actionable information showing you interactive tools that provide you the analysis for the subject that you're most interested in. So, this is a very quick overview of Size Up Small Business Intelligence and Small Business Advisor, but together it creates an entire suite, enabling your local businesses to have access to the knowledge that they need to learn and answers to the questions that are most pertinent to their success. Thank you so much.
So, a press release will go out tomorrow informing the business community about a free training webinar to be held on Monday, September 30th, at 9:00 a.m. The webinar will be recorded and put on our website for those who can't make this date. The press release will contain details about how to register and obtain additional information. Staff will inform all chambers of commerce that service Garden Grove, the Small Business Development Center, the Orange County Business Council, the County of Orange, and other business networks of this tool. Information will also be posted via the city's social media channels. In conclusion, by providing business intelligence and market research through Size Up on our website, we are partnering with our local business community and their success. Businesses typically pay a lot of money hiring expensive management consultants, market researchers, or business analysts to obtain this type of information. By providing Size Up on our website, we are enabling businesses to access data 24/7 to help them prosper and grow. This is important because before and after work hours are when business owners have the time to focus on growth strategies and performance, not while they are running their business or when City Hall is open. Thank you for your leadership and providing the resources to help small businesses thrive in Garden Grove. Our Size Up representative, Mario Obalde, and I are available to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Colleagues, question?
No questions, just super cool. Thank you.
May I just say a quick note? So, yesterday, I actually walked around in our district and meet people, and there was a gentleman that he I think if I say too much, then we're going to know who that is, but say that we don't have, we get and go, city do not do enough thing for business, and I told him all the thing that we did, and I'm so glad we just talked about it yesterday, so now that you have it, so I will make sure to bring it and disseminate the information to the businesses in my district, so that's it. Thank you, great job.
Well, thank you, guys. All right, that takes us on to oral communications. We do have half a dozen cards, so we'll go ahead and get started. Kyle Mason.
Good evening, everybody. I notice you guys always call me first. Next time, do me a favor, please call me last. I kind of like to hear some of what everybody else has to say, I'd appreciate that. Number two, I want to thank everybody, especially the police. They did a pretty good number after I said I was going to go down into the riverbed and clean them out. Within two days, they went down there and they wiped out. I heard they arrested 12 people, nine of them had warrants. Thank you, guys, I really appreciate your work and appreciate you guys being around, and we hope you will continue to do so. We still have some issues in the neighborhood. Ms. Tramp, I think we have a problem is, do you guys, your family, own that gray building on Gilbert? Because the wall behind it is about to fall over into the riverbed. I got pictures of a lady crawling up into that wall from that riverbed and stuff, and is there any way we could do anything better to fix that wall and fix around that area? We've been trying to get it and been talking about it for the last couple of years, so I'm trying to figure out ways to stop things, but with all these pictures that I've got, I mean, physical pictures speak more than anything. But again, and we also got a vehicle, and it's a motorhome, it's been around for three years without any registration. In fact, I took a picture of it on my way here, it's sitting over at the CVS right now. No registration, no insurance, no nothing, and he keeps living in the Walmart parking lot, the Promenade parking lot, and the CVS parking lot, and the security, which I'm part of, we're all getting tired of kicking this guy out, and the police won't do anything about it, and he's only been there a couple of years. Is there anything you guys can do, anything about getting this guy out of there? It would be appreciated, because I think there's a lot of traffic going in and out of there, if you know what I mean. And other than that, please keep the police coming around, we really appreciate it, and help keep the riverbed cleaned up. Thank you for the flag on the Social Security building, it looks awesome. We got a brand-new one. And yes, sir, it's a different shirt, you haven't seen this one, so I'll stick around and hopefully you'll get a chance to see it. Thank you, guys.
Good evening, everyone, city council members. Zia Alweebe. Other than English, I speak four languages, and it comes in handy because it's an advantage, gets people to hear and to be heard, so it's a really good thing. But the Size Up, I'm going to pass that on to the business owners I know, because, you know, Sack of Donuts down here, they have the best apple bear claws west of the Mississippi, no doubt, okay? I go home to the East Coast and they say, "Did you bring the things?" I say, "Yeah, I brought the things," so that's a good thing to have. You know, as everybody has experienced in the last 72 to 96 hours, the heat index got you know, the kids played a lot later in the evening because it was cooler, and I live in District Five, right between West and New Hope, and we have just no lights in our in our neighborhood, you know, it's very dark at this time of year at, you know, 8:00. And a lot of the kids, you know, they get on my nerves, but I want them to be safe. And even an "I don't know" or "I'm not sure" would be something to pass on to the homeowners, the tax-paying homeowners that have already, you know, paid for the streetlights that are not there, and I know that, you know, the city has its problems with infrastructure and things of that nature, but I am relentless, I will be here and keep squeaking until that wheel gets some grease. I love my boring neighborhood, I've been here for 12 years of the 15 years I've lived in the OC, and this is my home, so I want to, you know, serve it as best I can. You know, for very short years, the whole country and the world will be looking up close and personal to the Olympics because we are just an hour away from LA, and, you know, between Brookhurst and Chapman, sorry, Brookhurst and Garden Grove and Brookhurst and Chapman, you see some things there that you don't see on Harbor. You know, with our homeless issue that we have, you know, 30% of our nation's homeless live in the state of California, now you have one out of 50 states that has a third of the nation's homeless. Now, you have one out of 50 states that has a third of the nation's homeless. That should raise eyebrows. That should raise hairs on the backs of people's necks. And people will be looking up close and personal to what we are doing or what we have yet to do about that. Right now, it's like sweeping dust underneath a rug, and there's a lump in that rug. And I know it's being compartmentalized somewhat, but I think we can do better. I know we can do better. I love living here in Garden Grove. Normally, you can't beat the weather with a stick. So it's really great. Thank you.
Heron Stone.
Thank you. I'm Heron Stone. I've lived in Garden Grove for about 50 years. And I quit working about 10 years ago. And I've got a lot of time and a lot of energy that's free and available. I spent the last 50 years studying language and its relationship in the way we think. And I'm particularly interested in the next two generations of children and how they think. Because we are headed into the biggest change the planet has seen. The next 10 years, we're going to see more change than we've seen in the last 100. Things are going real fast, and the next two generations of kids are the ones who are going to be facing all of this stuff. And they have the opportunity, we have the opportunity, to create a new world coming up. Central in that is language, the voice in our head, the way we talk to ourselves. I handed out a bunch of cards. You guys, on the back of there, there are some QR code. There are 17 links to stuff I've done, some workbooks for a course I teach, some podcasts. My primary work here, I suspect, will be with the school district. I'll be making a presentation there in a couple of weeks. But I just want everybody to know what I'm doing. I'm available. I've got time. Thinking in English is a problem. So I think I've had my say. Here I am. I'm available. Thank you.
Thank you. Rick Castro.
Good evening. I live on District Two, between Orangewood and Cotella. And there's a school that's right behind it. It's called Skylark. It's back of it, of Magnolia. There's semis that have been parking there. I've been here for 24 years, and I've never seen it. And it's hard for us to get out of that, out of Joycel. I'm on the west side. There's been numerous accidents. I spoke into the traffic control engineer, and he says that they are not allowed to park there. I've called the police. It's dangerous. Somebody's going to get killed. And I don't understand why they're allowed to park there. I mean, you go down Magnolia, I don't... Not unless, is that a truck stop? Anyway, thank you for your time.
Thanks, sir. Nicholas Dibs.
Mayor Jones, members of the council. My name's Nicholas Dibs. I want to kind of piggyback on what Heron Stone was commenting, the speaker that spoke a couple of times before me. Around the town is this sign, and it says, "Do you want our schools to have skilled trades shop classes?" And I need the council... We have an issue with an up-and-coming generation and generations of workforce, workforce depletion. We don't have enough qualified people. So anybody who's in the trades, across the board, from electricians to carpenters to welders, to all the trades, plumbers, for every, on average, for every two that retire, only one's coming in. So it was back eight years ago. I worked in the district over 16 and a half years. And I'm over here at Dale and Lamson at Alameda's Intermediate School. And I was filling in for an art teacher. I'm a fully credentialed science teacher. And the art teacher and the wood shop... We were down, out of the 10 intermediate schools, down to two that had a wood shop left. So the wood shop teacher said, "The art teacher's leaving, and they're going to make me the art teacher close down the wood shop." And the principal and him want the wood shop to stay open. And they went to the fifth floor of the district office and begged him not to close it. I found out about it and did emails. The point is, is they didn't listen to what the principal had to say. They didn't listen to the wood shop teacher. Had been there many years, and they didn't listen to me. And I asked them before they closed the last two at GGUSD not to do it. Since that time from now, they've done virtually nothing to bring back our trade classes that they eliminated in the seventh and eighth grade. And if you go to Nicholas Middle School in Fullerton and Google the tiny home that the eighth-grade wood shop students built, a little tiny home, and gave it to the homeless. And Mr. Councilman Devine, your wife was very eager about that project when I mentioned it. We need that here in Garden Grove Unified. The point is this: There's misinformation and disinformation out there in the community that I don't know what either, you know, saying that the district is bringing these classes back. So now at the... They're not bringing them back. They have not brought them back. They closed all 10 wood shops and metal shops at the seventh and eighth grade. They substituted that in for STEAM, Science, Technology, Engineering, Art, and Math. You can't tell me, a science teacher, that that class takes the place of a wood shop. It doesn't. And every carpenter and construction worker, people that know what's going on in the real world, say we have a shortage of skilled workers. And the trade classes that we had years ago still make sense. And I met hundreds of people that have told me this. So find out the truth. People can call me 714-715-7600. My name's Nick Dibs. And get the truth and the facts rather than the disinformation and the propaganda. Thank you.
Raquel Soto.
Hello. First time here, so excuse me. I wanted to make note that the car storage facility, I don't know what it's called, neighbors... I don't know what it's called, where they're keeping the cars. Do you guys know what I'm talking about? Anybody?
Simpson Chevrolet.
Simpson Chevrolet. It's on Gilbert. They have an alarm system that goes off all night long, and nobody's there. Sometimes people are there, but it's very loud and disruptive to the residents that live there. I've called numerous times to Simpson. Nobody takes responsibility. Sometimes it's their tow truck people that are delivering cars at 3:00 in the morning. But this is going off constantly. It's just, you know, warning, you're being recorded. But I'd love for somebody to help us with that noise complaint. Number two, the Promenade area, Walmart, Social Security, Women's Club, that whole area, it's out of control. We do have some security over there, but security goes home at midnight. Guess what comes up after midnight? The zombies come crawling through. I am a business owner on Gilbert. I manage an apartment complex on Gilbert. And these guys are coming through at midnight through our property, rummaging through our stuff, stealing stuff, breaking into cars, using the riverbed as an escape. So they rob Walmart, go through the riverbed. Kyle's a neighbor. Without him, the place would be disgusting. You know, he is loud. He's obnoxious. But together, we really do, like, we make it known that you can't be here, you know, kicking these people out. This morning, I found Narcan. I found fentanyl testing strips right in my driveway. I have it on camera, all the stuff that they do. But I have cameras in my parking lot, and I see these people on a daily basis. They're doing this every single day. So that riverbed, it's a problem. And I know he's here all the time complaining, and I'm here to back him up. This is a problem. We live here. You guys don't? Maybe? I don't know. But this is our backyard. These are people that are coming into our backyard and just daily, daily. I have businesses. So not only is this affecting my sleep, this is affecting my business. People don't want to come conduct business with me when I have zombies in my front yard and trash just everywhere. So I would love help with that whole area. I don't know what you guys can do, don't know how this works. But if there's anything that can be done, I would really love any kind of assistance with that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that's all the cards we have. So we will close. Oral communications will now recess to successor agency. Madam Clerk, if you'd like to call roll.
Member Bridgum?
Here.
Member Tran?
Here.
Member Dovin?
Present.
Member Klavensky?
Here.
Member Nguyen Pinalosa?
Here.
Chair Jones?
Here.
And Vice Chair O'Neill is absent.
Okay, we already did oral communications. Consent calendars, just receive and file. Can I get a motion?
Move.
Call the vote.
Motion received. Six yes votes.
Any matters? Seeing none, we will adjourn back to City Council. We'll reconvene City Council, and that goes to consent calendar. We already did items three and four. So it's recommended that five through 10 be acted on simultaneously unless anyone would like to pull an item. Call the vote.
Motion received. Six yes votes.
All right, that takes us on to items for consideration. Item number 11.
Item number 11 is approval of a lease agreement with Farmers and Merchants Bank for office space located at 12966 Euclid Street. And Mr. Paul Guerrero is here to provide that report.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. The item before you for your consideration is a lease agreement by and between the City of Garden Grove and Farmers and Merchants Bank for Suite Number 150, first floor, northwest corner, located at 12966 Euclid Street, a city-owned facility. Farmers and Merchants is seeking a new branch office to replace their existing facility located at Garden Grove Boulevard and Bowen Street. Their branch has served the community since 1955. Leasing the first-floor suite to Farmers or Merchants may bring a certain cachet to the building and could attract additional tenants. The agreement deal points include a lease agreement for 11 years, rent at $250 per square foot, highest rent in the building, an estimated annual rental income of $162,960. Leasee will cover their operating expenses at 8.28%, or approximately $11,530 for the first year. And over the lease term, it is estimated the agreement will generate approximately $1,863,762. It is recommended that City Council approve the lease agreement and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement, including any minor modifications or amendments and any other pertinent documents to implement the agreement. That concludes staff's report, and staff is available for any questions.
Thanks, Paul. Colleagues, questions? Come on, Joe. Go ahead.
I recall that we talked about signage. It's item 69 on the addendum. Would the city have any access to that if they install the digital sign? Will we be able to put any messaging on it on a selective basis?
It is not to allow a digital sign because that requires an amendment to the city zoning code. It's been expressed to Farmers and Merchant Bank that that is a regulatory process separate and apart from the city wearing their hat as a property owner and that they would need to go through that process, amending that code, and that we couldn't authorize through this lease agreement. That... So at this point, they're happy with just a monument sign that is static. And they're willing to move forward with the lease agreement with a static monument sign.
Okay, so let me confirm that it's not a digital sign. It's a traditional monument sign, and there's no issue with whether we can run any bulletins or anything else on it at this point, right?
Correct.
Thank you.
Comments or a motion? We have a motion and a second. Call the vote.
Motion received. Six yes votes.
Thank you. Should we take a break now for Councilmember Bridgum's early pre-birthday cake party? But I mean, what's that? So finish and do it after? Okay. Cool. We'll move on to ordinances for a second reading. Item 12.
Item 12 is a second reading and adoption of ordinance number 2957, entitled An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove, amending section 10.56.110 and repealing section 10.56.115 of chapter 10.56 of Title 10 of the Garden Grove Municipal Code pertaining to oversized vehicle parking and recreational vehicle parking.
So what about it? We're reopening?
I'll move it.
We were just trying to highlight that we had a speaker regarding oversized vehicles, and we just passed an ordinance pertaining to that. So I thought it'd be relevant for the gentleman.
Sorry, I thought you were trying to open it up for...
I mean, I've been there for 44 years, and I've never...
Guess we did. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have the ordinance. Do we have a motion and a second? Call the vote.
Motion received. Six yes votes.
All right, that takes us on to matters. We have none listed. Colleagues, any comments going around the horn?
Yeah, sure. Happy birthday to my son yesterday. He's an old man now. We did have a few items. You know, the fire burning right now, our OCFA, this afternoon, we were going to have recognition for our OCFA firefighters. Unfortunately, that had to be postponed because they are busy fighting a fire. So anyway, just prayers for all the firefighters there, and hopefully, they all come back, and we can reschedule this event for them. We had a couple of speakers. We had one about, and I think Councilwoman Kim Nguyen-Penaloza had alluded to, we just passed an ordinance. You just heard it. And that will enable the police to start doing what you want them to do. So you should be... You came at the right date. Good time to come. And so I think that's about all I have to say.
So I'm going to talk about a two event that we're going to have this Friday. I know that I mentioned a little bit last meeting. And the first one is the Moon Festival for disability children. This is going to be at the Kiwanis Club on Friday from 4:00 to 5:30. There will be free lantern, mooncake, fae painting, balloon, animal balloon, et cetera. So if you know anyone that have children that would be interested to come, please, there will be free entry and prizes, including donation from Garden M for free ticket to go to the show, featuring from Fenchell Tea House, and food gift card, and wristband from Good Work Law. So I would hope that this event is for the community. So hopefully, anyone interested, please come. And then the second event is Empowering Future Leader Civic Engagement in Youth. This one is the event that joint effort for three city events and last meeting. For, as myself, you know, for Garden Grove, we have Mayor Potem for Westminster and Mayor Potem for Fountain Valley. There will be opportunity for youth to talk to different youth groups in the community. And also, there will be two scholarship, two student that put a lot of effort to support in the community and volunteer at time to help other. So those are the two events that I'm looking forward to see youth and children to come and have fun. So next is relate to the guest speaker, or not guest speaker, but the resident came and talked about the light. I know that we talked about this many times, and... Um, I know that we talked about this many times, and, um, uh, it is if everyone said, "Okay, I need a light for my street." And I said the same thing before I became a council member. But after you go to the process, you check and you see how much it costs, so everybody hesitate about that because it costs too much. So I really hope that, um, we keep talking about this, and maybe one of this day, our staff will be able to do something about it, whether, you know, come up with some money that's set aside, and we could do lorry or, you know, I don't know. But I really hope that we, we'll be able to do something about it, not just hearing people coming and asking, um, and, and, uh, resident also menso, mentioned about the, um, the Olympic and all that, so we need to look forward to that. You know, what can we do to beautify our city? And welcome the guests when they come here. Um, and then the other item were about the homeless. Um, we have a couple of residents talk about that. Um, I live in that corner right there. Um, I know that sometime we talk and we have to rely on, you know, the police and all the people taking action, but if resident out there that are interested in doing something, maybe we walk there, I don't know, certain time or couple of time, something like that. I would love to tag along with you guys and making something happen, not just coming here and we go nowhere. I know that our, our, our staff, our police try their best, and they did, you know, uh, as one of the resident mentioned earlier, but maybe there's more that we have to do to make some changes. So, um, I would volunteer myself to tag along with you guys. That's it.
Joe?
Uh, just a couple of things. Um, I think, uh, last month, we got the fourth bin for organic recycling. Um, so to remind people that it is on our, um, uh, GG City website or application or the apps, though you can, um, read up on the organic recycling and try to utilize that because I'm seeing some people putting other things in that bin other than organics recycling. So just remind people to use that properly. Uh, I wanted to congratulate, uh, ourselves on the lease with, uh, Farmers and Merchants Bank. I've banked with them for many years, so I, I think it's okay to vote for that lease, even though I am a customer also, and I look forward to their signage on that building. I think it will, um, uh, put that building back on the map for Garden Grove, right at that corner of Euclid, uh, and Garden Grove there. So, um, uh, is it Acacia or, um, that street corner? Anyway, that building, um, we're happy to see Farmers and Merchants come in on the first floor there and, uh, appreciate them, uh, making amends to be able to work with us for that, um, lease agreement. So we look forward to them being, and, or tenants for a long time to come. So congratulations on that. Lastly, we have other things on our, um, GG City website, which are very helpful for people, so, um, I, I browse it from time to time to see our key initiatives and new things coming along, like the business resources, um, that we had a presentation tonight, and I highly recommend everybody to make the best use of that. It seems to be, uh, very helpful for anybody in and around town to know their competitors and be able to, um, develop and grow their businesses better, all things that we really need to do, um, to promote our city and our residents. So please take, uh, make good use of that. Thank you.
Thanks, Steph.
Thank you so much.
Back to Cindy, real quick.
Sorry, I forgot this really quick. I just want to say happy birthday to my son. He will have his birthday in two more days. So that was it. Thank you.
Uh, I really enjoyed the presentation on the size up, and I was curious, do you have to be a business owner or potential business owner to attend that free webinar, or can anyone that's just interested in that information join?
It'll be open to any.
Perfect. Okay, very good. Yeah, I think that all the data is so fascinating to see, and I think it's just such a great resource and tool for the community and especially for our businesses. So thank you so much for that presentation. Um, a couple other things, September fourteenth, that's a Saturday here at the Senior Center, our Lewis Sage Lake Senior Center, which is attached to our CMC, is our community cleanup here in District Five. So it's a wonderful opportunity if you need to do some, I guess, early fall time, uh, cleaning out, uh, this is your chance to do so. Uh, I would just recommend that you, uh, head to our city website to take a look at what you can dump and drop off versus what you can't. Uh, but that'll be happening this Saturday, and all that information can be found at our city website, ggcity.org. And then finally, um, with this last heat wave and the weather that we're having, the higher humidity is bringing out the mosquitoes big time. I don't know about you, but I'm, I'm getting bit up anytime I'm outside, so I'd be remiss if I didn't just remind you as your trustee for vector control to, um, make sure that you're dumping and draining any standing water. Try not to overwater if you can, where you're bug repellent, especially at dawn and dusk. That seems to be the worst times. Uh, we do have some, uh, fogging going on, not just in Garden Grove, but around Orange County. Um, this is a way to abate these mosquitoes and keep all of us safe. Uh, Vector Control does a fantastic job at outreach and also making sure communities that are affected know about this well in advance. You can go to ocvector.org if you want more information. Uh, but one of the best ways to prevent this is truly just protecting your neighborhood and your family and, and dumping and draining that standing water, checking your screens, wearing your bug repellent. They're simple fixes to help, but mosquitoes are biting year-round now, so unfortunately, this is something we're dealing with, but it is, does seem to be worse in these later summer months, so be careful. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, just wanted to highlight that in our consent items, we proclaimed, uh, September to be, uh, Hispanic Heritage Month, uh, National Hispanic Heritage Month, and we currently as a city don't do anything to celebrate, um, but I know our neighboring city does, and I will be there with them this weekend, I believe, for those activities, and I hope that the city manager is available and would like to attend and join me. Um, I also want to, um, bring up something that I've brought up before that hasn't really gotten a lot of traction, but I hope it's something that as a city we can aspire to, which is, um, having a more concentrated effort to launch neighborhood associations. I know that several cities around us have designated neighborhood associations throughout their city, and this is one way to help, um, folks combat a lot of several, several different issues. Um, I know we have someone that comes at every meeting to talk about their specific area. Um, while there is a neighborhood association that exists there, I know that it would be helpful, um, as a way to get more residents involved, more informed, um, but also, you know, incorporating neighborhood watches and, in a way to also ha, help us when we want to disseminate information so that we're not only having, you know, four hundred, six hundred, a thousand people participate in a survey of a city that's almost two-hundred-thousand. So I think it's a way to ignite the community and have them, one, feel pride in their community. I know that it's costly, and it's a lot of staff time, and we don't have that, but I, I just want to continue to ring that bell as something that we can hopefully aspire to in the future. Um, and I'll end with a happy early birthday to Councilmember Bridgum.
City manager, at least Kim.
Thanks.
General counsel, anything to report out from closed session?
There is no reportable action on a closed session this evening. Thank you, Mayor.
All righty, thank you all. We will adjourn, and then we're gonna go to the other room for some cake for Councilmember Bridgum's birthday.